Mayor Tack? Alderman Novit?
Here.
Alderman Waldeck is absent. Alderman Notes?
Here.
Alderman Powers?
Here.
Alderman Kreschlak?
Here.
Alderman Gashkarian?
Here.
Alderman Weber?
Here.
Alderman Walder?
Here.
Mr. Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Please rise for the political legion. Political Legion.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. First item is comments by mayor. And my only comment is I never cease to be amazed at how conscientiously this city manages our finances. And again, I'd just like to express my appreciation to Elizabeth and your staff for how well you do your job. Next item is comments by city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of city council. Good evening. I have one item tonight. I'm pleased to finally be able to share with both the council and the broader community a summary of the community survey results that we received several weeks ago. And in a minute, I'm going to turn it over to our assistant city manager, George Asaku. But I first just want to extend my thanks to the many residents who participated in the survey. I think everyone here knows we have a very engaged and passionate community. And I think that's reflected in the number of survey respondents we had. It was admittedly a lengthy survey. Took real time for people to spend the time in completing the survey. But all told, I think we had around 1,500 households, which is a really good number for us. And so the results from the survey will certainly help inform future decisions, guide resource allocation discussions. And so with that, I'm going to turn it over to George, who will introduce members of the ETC team who had partnered with us in this process and to discuss some of my next steps now that the data's been collected, analyzed, and summarized. So, George?
Thank you, sir. Mr. Mayor, members of city council, thank you for your time this evening. We are really excited to present the results of the community survey that we conducted over the summer this evening. And before I invite Mr. Murray up to do so, I just want to take a moment to reflect back on kind of the process. Before I even got here, over a year ago, this process started with an interdepartmental committee of folks that volunteered their time to help us formulate a scope and a vision for what we wanted this survey tool to look like and what the vendor ultimately they wanted to land with could help us with. And they worked together to help us formulate that scope. And we were able to work with ETC Institute, who we selected for their flexibility and for the opportunity to create a survey tool that was different than, I think, what the city had done in the past and give our departments a chance to really take a step back and develop something that would be specific to their department and a little bit more creative and a tool that would be valuable for us to get some feedback from the community. And then I also wanted to point out that the department directors and their management team spent a significant amount of time with us, really taking the time to do that. Look at their department questions, scrutinize, work together, debate with us and amongst one another to really make that tool comprehensive. And then finally, to thank all of you for helping us with that final draft, giving us that perspective and looking at those questions and offering some context that we might not have had. And ultimately, I think we were excited about the survey tool that we put together for the community to give us that feedback. And so it's really a great moment for us to just reflect on that. And I would be remiss if I didn't also thank Reagan Walsh, our former management analyst, that spent a lot of time on this and was really the champion of this project for the year, a little over a year that he was here. He started his first day with the city of Chicago today, but I just wanted to point out and then thank him for all his work. And also, with respect to communicating the results, looking forward, our communications manager, Dana Olson, has posted the results online for the website for the public to consume with some navigation help because it is a big document. But we do plan on synthesizing that information down, doing some specific callouts over the course of the next few months. And we'll be putting that out in all the platforms we normally do to get that information out to everybody. And finally, one last piece. I want you all to know that this is really a foundational tool for us as we look forward to the strategic planning process that we hope to start in the next few months going into next spring. And so we're focusing on, right now, we're looking at a vendor selection for that process. And we want those groups to look at this survey tool as a foundational piece of information to help inform that visioning process for all of you in the community. And so that's just one last piece I would like for everyone to keep in mind, that this is a really exciting first step towards kind of where we're headed over the next six to eight months. So with that, I'll invite Mr. Murray to go through the results.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Isku. Thank you, Mayor and members of the council for allowing me to be here tonight to present these results. We'll get into how good they are in just a moment. But we don't get results like this every day. So my name is Ryan Murray. I'm here to present the community survey results. I'm from ETC Institute. I'm the Assistant Director of Community Research with ETC Institute. I've been there on and off for about 20 years, but in my capacity for about 15. I started there in high school, so I've kind of worked my way up from call center kid in high school, calling. And when it still worked, we would actually make home phone calls and actually call people to complete these surveys over the phone. That no longer works. But I started there. Throughout college, I continued my career with ETC. And then after college, I came on full-time as a more professional position. ETC Institute's really the nation's leader in market research for local government organizations. For about the last 40 years, we've been in business. For about 35, we've really specialized in governmental approach. So most of our clients are governmental clients. We have some private sector clients still. But the vast majority of the work that you see here is all governmental clients. We've got a strong presence kind of here in the Midwest. When we talk about the purposes of these surveys, there's many layers and faceted approaches to these things. But the main purpose is really an objective assessment of overall quality of your services. On top of that, for the city's approach, we wanted to make sure to help inform the strategic plan. And Mr. Isku was able to kind of introduce that to you all and how this might be used for that. Beyond the objective assessment, we also want to compare your performance with other communities, both regionally, nationally. And we've actually done multiple performance measures here, including similarly sized communities. And what we're actually going to look at here tonight is actually a median income category, which we don't do frequently just because it's a really competitive analysis form. We also are going to help determine priorities for the community based on a few design features of the survey. So even if 100%, which we got close in a few categories, even if 100% of residents were satisfied with all the services and we had no problem areas anywhere, we still would have designed and developed some priorities for improvement just simply based on the design of the survey. When we talk about methodology, this is the first community survey administered by our firm for the community. We administer it by mail and online to all homes in the community, which is something that not every city takes advantage of. So again, the city of Lake Forest actually went above and beyond our typical sampling goals in order to ensure that all households had an opportunity to participate. Most frequently, what we'll do is select a random sample of households within the community to be participants in the survey. As you can see there, each survey took approximately 15 or 20 minutes to complete. That's based on our online survey administration methods. And overall, there's about 7,000 households in the community. We were able to collect 1,450 completed surveys, which gives us a response rate of about 20%. While I've seen 20% response rates based on random sampling before, I've never achieved a response rate so high based on all household participation. So I mean, this is an outstanding achievement. One of the reasons for that is because our typical margin of error, our goal margin of error for this particular project was about 5% plus or minus at the 95% level of confidence. And you were able to bring that down based on participation alone to 2.6%. So just over 2.5% at the 95% level of confidence, which means if we were to allow all city participant households to participate again, and we collected 1,450 surveys 100 times, 95 out of 100 times, we're going to get these same results plus or minus that margin of error of about 2.5%. Now, that's heightened a little bit if we take that to the 99% level of confidence. But for planning and just simply gauging the climate of the community, 95% level of confidence is typically what will be used. In addition to some demographic features that were collected in the survey to ensure that the overall sample of the results matches or closely mirrors the representative sample of the community based on census results, we track also the geography of those respondents. So the household survey was based on residential addresses within the city. Only one survey per residential address was selected, and we were able to track that online using that verification question at the very end of the online survey. And as you can see here, we got a really solid distribution of responses from throughout the city. When we talk about who responded, some questions, as you can see in the report, are directly comparable to U.S. Census results. What we're comparing here is your age or age of the respondent. We also asked the household type ages so we could get a more accurate assessment of who or what type of households were responding to the survey. But here, what we want to make sure that we're seeing is a solid representation from all of those various age categories. And we also want to make sure that we're representing those folks that have lived here 31-plus years, but all those younger residents as well, or not younger residents, but newer residents to our community. We talk about the bottom line up front. This is just astounding news. Nearly, and given our margin of error, about 100% of residents are indicating that the excellent, or that the quality of life in the community is either excellent or good. Now, that's really 98% based on the sum of excellent and good ratings in the survey. But given our margin of error, you'd be really hard-pressed to find anybody in the community that wouldn't give that excellent or good rating if you just stopped them on the street. When we talk about quality of services provided by the city, 94% of respondents indicated that those are excellent or good. The whole survey results are kind of predicated on that particular response. Now, typically, when I look at these results, I go to these perception-related questions first to get an idea of how things are maybe going to play out. I presented results a couple of weeks ago where the city council was very satisfied with the 74% of respondents indicating excellent or good to the overall quality of services. This is just one more notch in your hat, really, here to just suggest how highly residents see the city. And we'll see some of those other city services where we see wavering levels of satisfied and very satisfied responses. But generally, the overall perceptions in the community are extremely high. And satisfaction with your services are significantly higher than our national and regional benchmarking. We do a robust yearly survey of residents across the United States. We break that up into different sample sizes and the different regions across the country. And that's kind of our national or U.S. benchmark. We'll see that in a later slide. Based on conversations with staff, we took a different approach, wanted to give you a higher level of analysis. Contextualization is always a really great way to know that you're heads and shoulders above other communities or where you're comparing in problem areas. We first started with similarly sized communities, about 20,000 to 25,000. You performed extremely well. We wanted to kick it up a notch. And what we'll be looking at tonight in this and what's in your final report is actually a median average for communities that have an average household income of over 100,000. Now, if we sparse that up to over 200 or over 150, we'd just find fewer communities. So we brought down the bar a little bit. But those are communities for which the expectations are extremely high from residents, which is very similar to what's going on here in Lake Forest. When we talk about general perceptions, I've already stated the obvious. But folks are extremely satisfied with the overall quality of life in the city, the overall quality of services provided. And even going all the way down to the bottom, 60% of respondents are still saying excellent or good when we're talking about city council acting in the best long-term interest of the community. So even when we're talking about elected officials, we're still seeing extremely high positive responses. One thing nationally that's really occurred over the last 18 months to 24 months is a significant drop in trust in local governments. The perceived notion that you could trust your governments in the past is kind of fading based on some of our research. It seems like here in Lake Forest, you've been able to kind of combat that national trend that we've seen other places where 60% would be praised in other communities, similarly to the other example I gave where I think 74, 64% were satisfied with the quality of life. When we talk about satisfaction with overall city services, we've listed kind of the overall or major categories here within the survey instrument that I'm sure you're familiar with, or at least is in the back of the full report. You'll see that we broke this down into various subsections, but it's all kind of predicated on what we're seeing here. And what we're seeing is fire and emergency, parks and trails, and police services coming out at the top. When we asked respondents, what are those services for which are most important or we should emphasize most over the next few years? Those were also the three services that they want us to continue to emphasize. So what that tells us is that we're performing extremely well. They want us to keep up that good work. Now, as we get towards the bottom, we find some services, overall quality of new development and the development process. But we know residents are typically less well-informed about those types of issues, which can lead to some perception-related issues. What we want to do is make sure to set the bar for those, communicate effectively. But we're still performing extremely well with less than 20% of respondents saying anything in the dissatisfied category here. We wanted to also ask, you know, what's bringing you to Lake Forest? What's going to keep you here? What I've highlighted are the items that are going to have the largest impact on the respondent's decision to stay in the city. So that's kind of struck across all of those items there. But what I did is basically sorted the chart in the sum of very important and somewhat important responses. The only thing that's not necessarily important to a vast majority of respondents is the availability of multifamily housing, whereas everything else is really high or elevated levels of importance. And what we find is that lower taxes than in nearby cities, schools are kind of those items that maybe aren't necessarily bringing people here, but definitely going to keep them here. Overall safety and quality of your services is also one of those top-selling features. And we also asked another perceptions-related item. I couldn't even chart the percentage of respondents who said that they were unsafe or very unsafe. It was 0.4% of our 1,450 surveys. Vast majority, 98% of respondents, indicate they feel very safe or safe in the community, 1% saying neutral. We talk about benchmarking. Contextual comparisons are really the best way to analyze and adjust for your performance. I've already kind of introduced some of our benchmarking here. What we've done is really taken out all of those surveys for communities for which ETC has administered the survey over the last two years in communities with a median income of above 100,000. We call these high-performing organizations only because they regularly adjust or regularly track their performance in the same key metric areas that Lake Forest did on this survey. So we call those high-performing organizations, but we've kind of taken the cream off the top there. And these are high-performing organizations with residents with high expectations. And as you can see here out of the items that were listed, you've rated above in all 25 items that were comparable. But in the overall satisfaction with the major city services, you could see just how far and away you are above those national and the communities with the median income categories. What we would say here is a difference of about 3%, maybe up to 5% for some of the averages, would be a significant difference. And you were able to beat that in all but the library programs and services. I wouldn't feel too bad about that library staff. Libraries perform exceptionally well in high-performing communities. As you can see there, the average for those communities is 88%, where its national average is 66%. So you're performing far and away above the national average, just not as far away in some of our services as we are in that one. We talk about priorities for improvement. As I mentioned at the beginning of the presentation, regardless of how the results would have shaken out, we were going to develop priorities for improvement based on the satisfaction. And then this question as well, city services that are most important to households. What we want to assess are those services for which residents are below-average satisfied and above-average indicating importance. And what we find there is that there are no services overall in the city of Lake Forest for which residents think that we should have a dramatic or a major shift in investment or priority just based on these results alone. As you can see here, there are some items that waver or fluctuate in terms of generalized satisfaction. But those items are typically going to be significantly less important to folks. So example, one of our lowest-rated items is our Dickinson Hall Senior Activity Center Programs and Services. Still, at nearly 80% satisfaction. But only one of those important services out of the top three choices to only 3% of respondents. So even a massive increase in satisfaction to that given line item would not have a significant impact on overall perceived satisfaction moving forward. However, we were able to find a few areas in which the city could address or look at a little bit more closely in the coming years in order to improve generalized satisfaction with city's infrastructure. This is drainage and stormwater sewer management, streets and neighborhoods, city streets overall, and city street lighting. I've also highlighted city sidewalks in this particular section. It's one of those areas that if satisfaction were to dip just slightly, it would become a high-priority item or a rating of .10 or more. And what we've also done is provided an appendix of GIS maps for the community. And based on that dot map that we saw at the beginning, that yellow map with the red dots, we've averaged all of the scores within those census block group areas to determine the mean rating for all of those areas to help identify or find potential problem areas. Now, there's not a lot of variation within the report, as you'll find. But this was one of the areas that associated with one of our high priorities for improvement, where we saw a particular area of the city that's slightly more dissatisfied than other parts of the community. This was something that staff indicated to me that would be not well-received, but it would be understood, or there was some context here at play. We also did another form of analysis, both for recreation priorities as well as the library. We're going to display and present the recreation program priorities today. This is an investment priorities tool that we use nationally for parks and recreation. We do a lot of parks and recreation work for your districts here in the Chicagoland area. About 200 of these a year are completed across the country. And each and every one of them contains this type of analysis. What we want to know first from respondents is if they have a need for a given recreation program. And we had a separate question for library programs and services. But here's the overall, or the percentage of respondents who indicated they had a need. Community events and outdoor concerts are kind of towards the top. That's kind of regardless of age or ability or interest. Most folks are interested in those community events or outdoor concert, kind of that everybody can get involved. Now, towards the bottom, we're seeing early childhood education and programming. Doesn't mean that we should eliminate that type of programming. It just means we're teasing out a very specific portion of the population who have children. And that is approximately what you're going to see in most of the specific youth items. As we can see, youth sports sitting at 34% compared to athletic at 47%. We then want to assess, based on those responses, how well are those needs currently being met? So if you don't have a need for an item, you're not responding to this question. If you had a need, this is what you're responding to. And what we also want to know is which ones are most important, which is going to begin to translate to usage or current participation or future participation at the very least. And what we see is some of those more unique programs, again, art, sailing and dance towards the bottom, summer camps, you must have children particularly to participate in those. And what we see at the top is, again, outdoor concerts and community events, which come out to be our highest-rated items in the analysis. Now, I've been telling us for years, or I've been telling staff for years, we should stop using red. The CEO prefers the red as the top priority. It's not a bad thing. It's really just dictating or telling us that those items in the red, those top priorities for investment are those items that are going to lead to the biggest bang for our buck or the biggest return on our investment, meaning that the largest number of households in the community would be served or their unmet needs would be served by investing in those items towards the top of this analysis. Again, that doesn't mean that sailing and dance programs should be eliminated. It means that we're currently or likely serving the current need in the community relatively well. And there's not a need for future investment or further investment. Now, the items in the green, or excuse me, the blue, are those items for which there's a mixed level of need, a mixed level of interest and importance. And we should continue to likely fund those items in current paces. But those items in red, again, are going to go to serve the largest levels of need in the community, community-wide really, or city-wide. This is another, just example of some of the other analysis that we did in your full report. You'll see the overall open-ended comments. What we wanted to make sure that you saw here is that when we talk about some of our events, concerts, programs, fitness programs, membership, youth sports, when we're talking about all this stuff, we asked respondents for an open-ended response. And here are some of the items that they told us. You know, we see pickleball really large. We see some of those program adult class things very large. But I also see pool, another pickle mention, and some other items up there as well. We talk about communication. Communication's going to really be your key to success. And I think that's probably a part of the reason that you've had so much success to date. And I know that's not the only piece or the only thing in play here. But what communities that communicate well do is that they set the bar for the residents. So even if residents have high expectations for the quality of services, the expectations of the performance of staff, we've set the bar by communicating well with our residents. This is what you should expect. What we can see here is that the sources currently used to get news and information about the city programs, services, and events, topping out at the top there is the city's website, your quarterly dialogue newsletter, and email newsletter. So at the very top of this, folks are getting their information from the source, which is great. We also want to know which ones are you preferring to use, or where could you prefer to get some of this information? As you can see here, we've listed a large number of sources. What folks definitely prefer are the items that they're using, which is, again, city-sourced material, which means that you can set the narrative, set the bar, and set that expectation moving forward. One of the other things that we offered to the city that we've provided, and I know staff has just barely been able to scratch the surface of this, if they've even able, or had the time to do it, is an interactive data dashboard. So really, your data at your fingertips. And what we will provide is a survey link, or not, excuse me, not a survey link, but a link to this online dashboard, which has all of your community's results for this year. What we're showing here is results by key demographics, but there's also a cross-tabulations feature for which you can get in and start digging around. And what I've told staff is that after everybody's had a chance to kind of dig in and get their feet wet, is that I will set up a digital tutorial, basically. And so we'll go through questions. We'll go through any issues that you're having with the the tool itself, and I'll explain how to best use it if you have questions. And this is just another screenshot here. This is our correlations coefficients. Previously, this was our cross-tabulations page. I know this is really difficult to read, but just kind of giving you an idea of what it can do. In summary, it's really difficult for a consultant to kind of get up here and just say, "Hey, everything's great and everything's fantastic." No. In summary, everything is really great, and folks feel fantastic about living in Lake Forest. I mean, it is the bottom line. What we have is really an issue with some of our city infrastructure, some draining, city streets, city street lighting, really just in one particular area of the community for the most part. Those are really our only top priorities for investment based on the results of the survey. Even if you weren't to invest in those areas, I think residents would still remain relatively satisfied with the overall quality of services here. One of the things that is even more difficult is that there's not really any comparative features to say that you're struggling, comparative to our highest level of comparison, one that I've never performed or done for a community before, because I've always been concerned about the the reaction of council or the reaction of staff when you performed below that average. You perform significantly above it in almost every single metric. So, again, there's just not enough that could be said about the the quality of staff and the quality of the city services that you are providing. And the residents, 1,450 of them, were able to voice those concerns that they had. There were some dissatisfied remarks across the survey results, but we're always going to have detractors. If you're familiar with the Net Promoter Score, there's always going to be those folks on the other side of the fence. Given our margin of error, you'd say, you know, given the time of day or the day of week that they took the survey, they could have a completely different response based on some of those responses. So our suggestion is to do these surveys every two to five years to make sure that you're tracking your performance, maintaining those benchmarking levels, and tracking where you've come from and where you could potentially be. Really, the the city should just focus on a few of those those investment categories that we've highlighted in the city maintenance category, and probably plan to do another survey eventually. That is any questions?
Okay. For instances where other communities in our peer group did better, to the extent there were any, do we have access to who that peer group is to try and hone in on best practices that we might consider adopting here?
I don't like to, I don't like to just give out the results, but if there's an area for which you identified a staff that you'd like to say, "Hey, who's the highest performer in this given category?", I would be happy to provide contact information for that community group. Yeah.
Thanks. It was a great presentation. Can you please comment on your experience working with other companies or or cities as to how they've operationalized the survey results into a strategic planning process? Are there, are there drill downs, or hypothesis confirmations, or focus groups? Or how would you recommend a city move forward with this data to then enter into a strategic planning process?
Yeah. Given that the results are so overly positive, I think that there's one major focus, which would be our our city's infrastructure. Now, that's a focus of just about every community nationwide that we work with. Streets and street maintenance is constantly at the highest priority level for nearly all of our high-performing organizations. Now, when it comes to rolling this into or moving from this to a strategic planning effort, my suggestion is that what you've done is you purchased, or at least administered, a survey that gives you a really sharp knife in your tool belt. So when the time comes, that planner, the group, the consultancy that you hire to help you strategically plan, has something that's reliable, that has a backbone that they can stand against, and say, "We're moving in this direction for X, Y, and Z reason." Now, when communities really inherently use the data, and Mr. Walsh was a great testament to this, based in one of his previous employers, I believe, the city of Alatah, Kansas, which is where our home base is, they've developed a whole group of staff, about five staff, who deal with this data on the on the daily basis, and we administer quarterly surveys for them. I don't suggest or recommend that type of robust analysis or dive deep down into these results by communities of this size, or communities that perform this exceptionally well. Now, what I would suggest is to pay attention to these results, but one thing that I always consult on is that these results are really a snapshot in time. So if you wait 18 months, or a year, or two years, until you fire or find your strategic planning partner, and they take a few months to gear up and ramp up, the the results will be, what I'd say is, are stale. They just wouldn't be the current or the most recent perceptions of residents. So again, I think it's a really sharp knife in a tool belt for a strategic planner, but I would not suggest that we lean only on this as our only data source. And a great opportunity, and you mentioned it, is focus groups. So there are a few problem areas, or there are areas with elevated dissatisfaction. It's always great to workshop and focus group those types of ideas, because sometimes we just don't know. The survey can only go so far. Some folks spent over 20 minutes completing this. We wouldn't want to get too much more detailed than what we've already gotten. But when we say adequacy of street lighting, is the lack of street lighting making you feel unsafe? Is it difficult to maneuver the roads because of that street lighting? And some of those problems are really difficult to discern or, you know, draw out of the survey. So I think focus groups is the best way to take it, but really to take it as a as an override or overall or generalized guide to what we might tackle in our strategic plan, but with the expectation that we need to do this every few years, just to make sure we're staying up on opinions.
Alderman, Weber.
Thank you. Mr. Murray, what a nice presentation you've given. It's probably a positive one for you, being how well our community did. I had a question. We had talked, going back, about incentives to gain such a high percentage of community involvement. Did we end up giving out any incentive, like any, did we utilize that function at all in terms of, like, city swag, or gift card raffle? Or I'm just curious. We ended up awarding?
On my recollection, I don't think that we did, which is actually more astounding, that we got such a result that we did, but I can't recall that we had.
Yeah, and the fact that there were no incentives, I mean, cash is usually king in the incentives world, but we didn't offer any incentives, and it really, you know, 20% is 20%, and it sounds low, but that is not low in the field that I work in. You know, some cities struggle to get to 10% or 12%, and then we start to really struggle on the statistical validity of the results. But to see 20.6%, I think was the figure, 1,450 households, it's just a lot of voices, and it'd be really hard to ever say that those aren't the aggregate opinions or the overall opinions of most city residents, for sure.
I stand corrected. Dana texted me. She's watching live. Thank you, Dana. Lake Forest Chamber checks, so we're going to announce winners soon, so we did. That was early on in the process.
So good. So we we did end up with partnering with that. That's great. I'm, I hope to see the winners.
I thought it was autographed photos of the mayor.
I like that, too.
Highly sought after. Any other questions? Comments? No?
I just had one question. So the peer group of cities that are listed on page 51 in the overview that we received, that I'm looking at, that's from your internal pool?
Communities that we've administered a survey for within the last two years.
And you, and you said that you did it by manual, by median income, but you dropped it down a little bit.
I took it to 100,000.
Right, in order to widen the comparison.
Yep, robust average.
Thank you.
Any further?
Well, I'll just say, conclusion and thank you, Ryan. That was a great presentation. That certainly staff will continue a much deeper dive into the data. While there's a lot of positive information in there, we want to make sure that there might be items that are actionable, or at least present opportunities for community and council conversations, so more to come on on all of those points. And there's always opportunity for for improvement and for growth. But I do want to also just take a chance, piggybacking on these positive comments, to again, express my profound appreciation for the city staff that we have here. We talk a lot about, you know, the executive leadership team, and really, all of this starts at the top with them and the cultures they've instilled in their departments. But I think going even further than that, the results are really a testament to the frontline staff, the people who are out there every single day providing service to the residents. And I think as an organization, culturally, we recognize the high expectations that exist from our residents, and have really embraced those expectations, and just really, I think, rewarding and validating for those people who are a lot of the unsung heroes, the sanitation workers, the parks crews, our public safety employees, that we may not see on an individual basis doing their day-to-day jobs. But I really think that the high level of resident and customer satisfaction starts one individual interaction at a time, and then the aggregate leads to results like this. So I just want to make sure I had an opportunity to, again, thank all of the staff, particularly the frontline staff, for everything that they do on a day-to-day basis. And that would conclude my report.
Okay. Truly a remarkable document, I would say, and to the police, fire, and public works guys, you set the bar pretty high for the rest of us. Next item is yet another opportunity for citizens to address the city council. Does anybody present like to address the council? Seeing none, we will move on to committee reports. The Finance Committee will begin by acknowledging receipt of the fiscal year 2023 Treasury Report. This will be presented by Diane Hall, Assistant Finance Director.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. Tonight, we will be requesting acknowledgement of the fiscal 2023 Treasurers Report, which is included in your packet. By state statute, we are required to file the city's treasure report with Lake County, put it in the newspaper, all within six months of the end of the fiscal year. This week, it will be published in the newspaper on October 19th, on Thursday, in the Lake Forester. It will be very, very small, but it will be printed in the most tiniest font to get it in there. But we do post on the city's website as part of our transparency portal the, all of the weekly vendor expenses, so that way we make a really nice list of vendors, just so we have that transparency, because included in the Treasurers Report is a list of vendors that are paid within fiscal '23. The summary also gives the condition, financial condition of the city. It's just a nice report that we have on the portal, and are a great way to show our transparency with the vendors now. But I would be happy to answer any questions on the report.
I don't have a question on the report, but I just wondered, what point in time does the circulation of the paper get so small that it ceases to be adequate for our purposes?
It's a requirement, it's by state statute, so we're required to do it. I know there's been a lot of discussion about that requirement, because there's so much with the websites now that it would be easier to put it out on the website to say, "Please see our city website," but unfortunately, it's a requirement, so we do it the smallest print possible.
Fair enough. Any questions? Okay. May I have a motion to acknowledge receipt of the fiscal year 2023 Treasurers Report?
So moved.
Just a second. This is a voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The next item is the GFOA Triple Crown Award Presentation and Distinguished Budget Presentation Award. This will be presented by Jim Preschlack, Finance Committee Chairman.
Well, it is, it's deja vu, because I think every year, we always present this to the department, and I think the evolution and the consistent excellence of our reporting has just been bar none to any other community. And it's been 44 years, you know, consecutive years for the Financial Reporting Award, and eight consecutive years for the Budget Presentation Award. And it just, it always is such at a high bar, and it's so excellent, and they always find ways to improve it as well. I think when I first got on the council, they integrated the strategic plan and the key objectives to each one of the departments, to make it really clear on how the annual budget and the spending is carried out to implement our strategic plan. And obviously, as we dust off that plan, that process will continue. And so it's, it's quite remarkable, and we're just so lucky to have such a great staff across the city, and in particular, in the finance departments, which has won this Academy Award for many, many, many years. So thank you for all your hard work.
Thank you very much. The next item is Items for Omnibus Vote Consideration. I will read through the items. If anyone has one that they would like removed or taken separately, please let me know at the completion. Number one, approval of the October 2nd, 2023 City Council Meeting Minutes. Number two, consideration of adoption of updated versions of previously adopted state and national life, safety, and building codes used by the city. Final approval. Number three, consideration of a request to waive the fidelity bond requirement in connection with holding a raffle in the city of Lake Forest for Northwestern Medicine Lake Forest Hospital and the Women's Board of Northwestern Medicine Lake Forest Hospital. Approval by motion. Number four, approve the contract to Camp Nagia Midwest DBA, Camp Henry Horner, in the amount of $34,000. Number five, consideration of an ordinance for 797 Summitt Avenue, approving a recommendation from the Building Review Board, first reading and desired. Final approval. Number six, consideration of ordinances approving recommendations from the Zoning Board of Appeals for 334 Circle Lane and 797 Summitt Avenue, first reading and desired by the city council. Final approval. Is there any item that you would like to have removed or taken separately?
Hearing none. I turned my microphone on. Can I have a motion to approve the six omnibus items as presented?
So moved.
This will be a roll call vote.
Alderman Gashkarian.
Aye.
Alderman Weber.
Aye.
Alderman Walther.
Aye.
Alderman Novit.
Aye.
Alderman Powers.
Aye.
Alderman Preschlack.
Aye.
Seven yay, zero nay. Motion carries.
Excellent. Next item is old business, of which there is none this evening. Next item is new business, and I would like to ask Jason.
Thank you very much, Mayor, and pleased to bring forward another, I think, very good news story for the, really, the entire community at large. And before I turn it over for a formal presentation, I just wanted to provide a little bit of context for how we've even gotten to this point here tonight. I think what's being presented for the council's consideration is the culmination of a very long road, about 20 years probably, for the Elawa Farm Foundation. And for those who have more recent history, it's, it's probably somewhere none of us would have thought we'd be just a few short years ago. And, but the fact that we're here and presenting this tonight, I think, is a reflection of the really strong and productive working relationship between the city and the Elawa Farm Foundation. I really would like to take the opportunity to acknowledge the leadership of the foundation board, both current and past presidents. Elizabeth Blodgett is here tonight. Marina Purrier and Alex Hodges, who had played critical roles over the last few years, really have been instrumental in helping build and and advance the mission of the foundation. And I also just want to make sure I have the opportunity to acknowledge the Executive Director for the Elawa Farm Foundation, Laura Calvert. Laura has been a remarkable partner to work with on behalf of the city, not just in her efforts to help steward the property itself, but most importantly, to, I think, be a good neighbor. There are a lot of entities and players in a very small area out there. And so I just want to acknowledge all she's done to get us to this point. And with that, really excited to be able to talk about the potential next chapter for the Elawa Farm property. Elizabeth Hollab's going to walk through a quick presentation. You'll have the opportunity to hear from Laura as well. But just as a reminder for the council, there are three items associated with this. First is approving amendments to the special use permit, which was a unanimous recommendation from the Zoning Board of Appeals. Approval of an amended lease agreement. Some of the council may recall, the new structure and the relationship that switched to a more traditional tenant landlord relationship from a couple of years ago is just being expanded to, reflecting the incorporated, the additional space that the foundation is is taking over. And then third would be approval of a loan request, at least in concept for the foundation. Elizabeth can walk through the particulars of those, but that would be subject to future council action. So with that, I'll turn it over to Elizabeth.
Thank you very much. Thank you for those introductory comments. So as part of this evening's presentation, as Jason indicated, we'll take a very quick look back, talk a little bit about the special use permit amended amendment requested for approval this evening, talk a little bit about the amended lease agreement, loan requesting concept. We'll provide a summary of the request, council actions, and Laura Calvert, Executive Director of the Elawa Farm Foundation, will come up and give you a little bit more expanded presentation on the changes that they're anticipating, which are very exciting, and then we'll bring it back for your consideration of council actions tonight. So as part of our look back, 1998 was the approval of the Middle Fork Farm subdivision. In 2010, the city council approved the original ordinance and special use permit for Elawa Farm. As a reminder, the special use permit is required because it is a non-residential use on a residentially zoned property. In 2019, the city council approved significant amendments to the special use permit. Minor amendments were approved in 2022. Earlier this year, in 2023, as you know, the Wildlife Discovery Center sunsetted, which really generated the beginning of conversations about what could be at the Elawa Farm with that additional space available. So tonight, we will talk a little bit about Elawa Farm Foundation's concepts and designs for expanded use at the facility. So in summary, the special use permit amendment was included in your packet in Runlight Form, so you could clearly see the proposed changes from the existing special use permit. It does include the addition of a daytime cafe with both indoor and outdoor seating. Added dinner opportunities, these would be up to three times a month, about three times a week by reservation, up to 60 people. Important to know that this would be not done by outside catering. It would be done solely by Elawa Farm staff. A new and expanded kitchen with onsite catering would be significant capital improvements made to the city-owned property at the expense of the foundation. A reimagined visitor center. Some domestic farm animals being introduced to the site. As you know, with Wildlife Discovery Center, we had animals on the property, and so this would be a slight change in the types of animals to be representative of a Midwest farm. Upgraded classrooms and program areas, specifically in those areas that were occupied by Wildlife Discovery Center previously, expanded greenhouse facilities, and extended market hours. The chart here just gives you an illustration of the Elawa Farm property. So if you look at, the blue is the, is the entryway. Yellow is the current garden. And then you see the buildings in the middle. And then with the area number four, that's the greenhouse. The pink area above is the parking area. And then I would just draw your attention to the two areas that are hatched. The area to the left, the larger area in green, is the proposed area for the animals. That's area that was previously occupied by Wildlife Discovery Center. And then that center hash piece designated as eight, that's the cottage. And I would just make a point that neither the amended SUP or the lease presented this evening anticipates use by the Elawa Farm Foundation of the cottage. City facility staff is looking at that recently vacated property to see what type of improvements are needed to the building, and so any recommendations related to the cottage would be forthcoming. Accompanying the amended SUP is an amended lease agreement to mirror the changes in use at the special use permit. It recognizes the Elawa Farm Foundation's expanded use into the recently vacated spaces. It establishes an updated lease rate. I'd like to just talk a little bit about how that was developed. So we worked with city facility staff on what we anticipate the operating budget and capital budget to look like in the future, given the vacation of the space by Wildlife Discovery Center. So we did a detailed budget worksheet. We shared that with Laura at Elawa. We talked a little bit about proposed changes and shifting some of the utilities over to Elawa to take on those expenses directly, and then developed a lease rate that was a five-year average of the operating and capital costs anticipated at the facility. So it's really intended only to be a cost recovery, and to just simply cover the cost that the city incurs to maintain the property. The lease rate does provide for a phase-in, so the amended lease agreement sets forth a period where the current rate would extend through May 31st. That gives Elawa Farm Foundation time to do the needed improvements, plan capital improvements to the spaces, and then sets June 1st, 24, as the the point at which the new race, new rate reflective of the full use of the property would go into effect. The city does retain opportunity for limited community meetings. We did set forth in the lease agreement that the city, up to six times through mutual agreement between the city and Elawa Farm Foundation, could host community events at Elawa Farm. And then we also took some effort to clarify the responsibility for ongoing operating maintenance costs, which costs would be responsibility of Elawa Farm and which would be the city's. There is also a request. This is similar to the loan granted to the Ragdale Foundation. What we are requesting this evening is approval of the loan concept, and with that approval, then we'll go back, work with legal counsel to develop a a formal loan agreement that we would bring back to city council approval at a later date. Elawa Farm Foundation plans to initiate a capital campaign following approval of the SUP and lease agreement. And so this loan really just provides for a bridge loan for them to be able to go ahead and advance some of the capital improvements as they're doing their fundraising, so that they can do those capital improvements on an expedited fashion. $1 million is the requested total principal amount of the loan. There would be a 12-month drawdown period, so when the loan agreement came back for city council approval, that would initiate the 12-month drawdown period. They could draw down in increments over that one-year period. And then at the conclusion of the 12-month drawdown period, it would initiate a three-year payback of the principal, one-third of the principal in each year. There's a 6% interest rate recommended, and this, and the interest would be paid quarterly. Again, that is similar to the concept with Ragdell and the cemetery, intended to be a mutually beneficial rate that does not reduce the earnings that the city would have on investing that million dollars in some other fashion, but is a more competitive interest rate than the, the Elawa Farm Foundation might get from a bank. So it is a mutually beneficial interest rate for all. Collateral of the principal amount would be provided by Elawa Farm Foundation funds on deposit, and that would be verified and tracked by the finance department on an ongoing basis. And then, as I mentioned, this is very similar and probably sounds very similar to what we did recently with the Ragdell Foundation. So, before I turn it over to Laura, just a reminder, as, as City Manager Wisha indicated, there are actually three action items for the city council's consideration. First is to approve the ordinance amending the special use permit, approval of the amended lease agreement, and approval of the loan request in concept, with the understanding that the loan agreement would come back for approval at a later date. So with that, I will turn it over to Laura to provide a little bit more on their planned expansion.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of city council. I'm Laura Calvert, Executive Director of Elawa Farm Foundation. I have been with the foundation for just over three and a half years, and it's been a real honor to lead this organization and be a part of the community. I first want to thank you all for your leadership and support along the way, as well as recognize our board and staff for their hard work and leadership. And then, in particular, the city staff here. Thank you to Jason and Kathy and Elizabeth for your vision and collaboration and support. We couldn't be more thrilled to embark on this next chapter as an organization. So I'm just gonna walk through some of our proposed concepts and plans. We did go through the process of meeting with the zoning board this past July. So, our goal for the future of the Elawa Farm campus is to have more space to stretch our wings and provide more mission-based programs on the campus, as well as to backfill the community programming that was left with the sunsetting of the Wildlife Discovery Center. It's a strong interest of ours to maintain the public's interest in the farm and to keep them coming and engaged. We've planned for some enhanced programs, some new programs, including limited small farm animals, some food service on the campus, some additional areas to sit and rest, to really be a true community destination for our residents here. And of course, as we've been making these plans, we've been mindful of ensuring a low impact for the surrounding neighborhood. It's one of our core values to be a good neighbor to the residents of Middle Fork. We also have an interest of generating some additional revenue to help support the increase in our fixed costs, as we have a little bit more space, and to avoid having another tenant on the property with us. So here's just an aerial shot of the campus. This is what was shown at the zoning board meeting. So, the buildings that are surrounded by the color boxes represent the areas formerly occupied by the Wildlife Discovery Center. So, the color coding shows our proposed concepts for these buildings. There are no new buildings here, really any changes to the exterior of those buildings. So, starting at the top to the north, the yellow box is a proposed dedicated classroom to host year-round programs, moving to a year-round free visitor center for residents to come, engage with our staff, learn about the history and the current use of our farm, and, you know, see some cool educational demonstrations related to farming and agriculture and food. Moving down to the south, that would be our new culinary wing, which would include a commercial kitchen, a small indoor café, an adjacent seasonal patio. Moving to the west, the blue box represents the future area of domestic farm animals on the campus. So that's where the animals were kept in the outdoor exhibit previously for wildlife. And, you know, we're just proposing limited, small animals like goats, ducks, and chickens, which we know are a huge driver to the Elawa Farm campus. Not a week goes by where we don't see a disappointed child who is looking for the animals. So we know that that is a big driver to our campus, and we want to maintain that while honoring the history of our farm. And then just to the north of that, in the pink box, is a proposed hoop house, which is similar to a greenhouse, and that would allow for additional crop production at the farm. So we have a projected timeline of about 18 months, kicking off in January, given, you know, approval by you all. So, Phase One, which would run from January to June 2024, includes the reintroduction of farm animals to Elawa Farm. As I mentioned, it's just a limited amount of animals that are, don't create much nuisance odor. They're very family and kid-friendly, and they're corresponding small barns, sheds, coops. We would install an ADA-compliant gravel pathway for folks to be able to observe the animals and have some, you know, benches and seating areas. Next would be the production kitchen. So this would be a new commercial kitchen that could better accommodate our growth in food production and distribution. So now, we will be able to, for the first time, cater the onsite events that are already coming to the farm, which is, you know, a significant revenue opportunity for the foundation, as well as host up to three nights a week of evening food programs. We've seen that our farm dinners are very popular in the community. So, you know, we are imagining some additional ways to bring residents to the farm to dine together and break bread with one another. And then, open a small indoor café that's adjacent to the production kitchen. This would just offer daytime service only, and provide a indoor space for visitors and residents to get a cup of coffee, you know, meet a friend for lunch. It's, you know, interesting that there's really not a lot of places to sit and relax at Elawa, and particularly inside. And so, you know, in the heat of the summer or cold of the winter, there's not much to do or not a lot of places to seek shelter. So we would, we're really excited about this opportunity. Next, in Phase Two, that would run from July to the end of 2024. In this phase, we would furnish and open the visitor center, which would be a year-round welcome center. We really need a catch-all location at the farm. So when visitors come by and, you know, ask what is going on, what they can do, where the restrooms are, where the trails are, we have a dedicated location and team to be able to answer those questions and just provide a more engaging visit for the residents. Also in this phase, we'll dedicate an indoor classroom, which we currently do not have at this moment. So we now will be able to host year-round seed-to-plate programs for all ages in our indoor classroom. And then finally, open a seasonal patio, which would accompany the daytime café. And this would just be a small footprint outside with some tables, chairs, umbrellas, so folks can take their cup of coffee outside on a nice day. Okay, finally, in Phase Three, which would run in the first half of 2025, we would make repairs and enhancements to our existing learning kitchen. So, we would turn our learning kitchen back into a true teaching kitchen. Right now, that's where our education and our food, food production happens. And while those are similar activities, they compete with one another, and the equipment that we have in there isn't really appropriate for commercial use. So that's why we're building the new commercial kitchen, and we'll just repair the equipment that is in there, so we can host more culinary programs and classes and camps, and potentially, you know, open up a community-based cooking school there. And then finally, we would, we're proposing to install a hoop house, which is very similar in look and footprint as our greenhouse. The only difference is it doesn't have electricity. It's in-ground growing, and this would just allow us to expand our crop production, as well as extend our season earlier in the spring and later into the fall, and have more fresh produce for our community here. Okay, so that is, you know, just the high-level concepts of our next chapter, and thank you again for your consideration.
Okay. Are there any, do you have more?
No, I'll just make two additional points on the amendments to the special use permit. As City Manager Wisha indicated, the zoning board of appeals did consider this and did recommend approval with a vote of six to zero. And also, previously, there has been some concern expressed about private rentals at Elawa Farm. And so I just wanted to make the point that the amended special use permit makes no changes to the current limit, does not increase the number of private rentals. So all of this will be activities that are generated and, and done by Elawa Farm. So we're happy to answer any questions, but as noted, there are three action items for your consideration.
Are there questions or comments?
I just have a com, oh, I'm sorry, Nancy. I just, my, my comments are that of being a neighbor. I live right in the neighborhood. And I just want to express my sincerest thanks to Laura and the foundation for the excellent stewardship we see down there. The time that I came on council, I think, was 2019. We were in the process of renegotiating that special use permit. I think Alderman Preschlack was the chair of the PPL back then. And, you know, really, I think that the ship was righted, and I think it has proven to be a wonderful partnership. And this is, again, one of the many examples of jewels in our community. And many thanks to you, Laura, and your team. I'm excited for the future and what you're proposing. If, when we get into some of the parts of this, I, I have just a question or two, but I want to take a moment to acknowledge the wonderful work that they've done. And I'm excited for those animals, by the way.
I am gonna parrot Alderman, excuse me, Alderman Goshgarian. I was on the zoning board in 2019 when the special use permit was initially amended. And it is so exciting to see the direction everything's going in, and that the neighbors are in support of this new direction. And I just, I applaud your creativity and your thoughtfulness and everything that's happening over there. It's great. It's really, really nice to see.
Additional comments, questions? No? Okay. This is an opportunity, then, for public comment. Would anybody like to address the city council? Anybody other than Mr. Weiss? No, I'm just kidding. Please state your name and address.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor Tack and members of the council. I'm Joe Weiss. I reside at 1360 Middle Fork Drive, which, you can tell by that address, I'm even closer to Elawa than Alderman Goshgarian. I'm probably the second closest house in the entire city to, to Elawa. So, no, no one is probably impacted more by anything that happens at Elawa than, than me and my family. So, but we, I wanted to come here tonight to reiterate the support that I gave at the zoning board meeting in favor of this. I believe you have the testimony as part of the record, so I won't rehash everything there. But I just want to, want to state what a wonderful asset Elawa is to our community. It is a big part of the reason that 14 months ago, my family chose to move here and to move to that house on Middle Fork Drive. I, I can't tell you, every morning, looking out and seeing a farm across the street from me, and I tell my coworkers this, I put it on Zoom behind me, they, they think I'm in a rural area. I'm like, no, I'm in Lake Forest. They're like, "Lake Forest?" But Elawa has, and I know there were issues in the past that the, that neighbors had, and I, but that is the past. Laura has done a terrific job, being not just a leader, but a listener to the, to all the neighbors. And I think an important point to note is that before this came to the zoning board, there was, the, Elawa hosted a meeting in the subdivision with the homeowners. And of the 70 or so, 70-plus houses that are in the subdivision, only five residents showed up. So I, I take that as a, you know, the, the silent majority are very much in support of this. We really look forward to, there's, there's not a lot of pla, you gotta get into a car if you want to go get a bite to eat somewhere where we live. So, it'd be great to have this market here nearby. Really looking forward to that. It's not a 24-hour McDonald's or a 7-Eleven. This is something that I think is gonna be very, fit very well into the neighborhood, and I think most people in the neighborhood are gonna really enjoy it. The traffic, I know people have addressed the traffic issue, but, you know, there's only so many hours in the day of the, of any type of traffic being there, and it's really manageable. We all have driveways, we all have garages. I know a couple times, it gets a, for an hour on a Saturday morning, it gets a little tight, but that goes away very quickly. And, and I think it's just a wonderful, wonderful thing to have. So we really, I just want to state to the council and to all of you that me and my family, we support this project 100%. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there other comments? Okay. Seeing that there are none, I'd like to move on to a motion to waive first reading and grant final approval of an ordinance amending the special use permit for Elawa Farm at 1401 Middle Fork Drive, as recommended by the zoning board of appeals and as detailed in the ordinance.
Second.
Do we vote on this, or do we wait until the end?
We can, we can take them each separately.
Okay. And is this a roll call vote?
Alderman Weber.
Aye.
Alderman Walder.
Aye.
Alderman Novit.
Aye.
Alderman Notes.
Aye.
Alderman Powers.
Aye.
Alderman Preschlack.
Aye.
Alderman Goshgarian.
Aye.
Seven yea, zero nay. Motion carries.
Okay. And now, I'd like to ask for a motion to approve an amended lease agreement with the Elawa Farm Foundation.
So moved.
Second.
And a roll call vote.
Alderman Walder.
Aye.
Alderman Novit.
Aye.
Alderman Notes.
Aye.
Alderman Powers.
Aye.
Alderman Preschlack.
Aye.
Alderman Goshgarian.
Aye.
Alderman Weber.
Aye.
Seven yea, zero nay. Motion carries.
And I would like to ask for a motion to approve in concept, a loan by the city to the Elawa Farm Foundation in an amount not to exceed $1 million.
So moved.
Second.
And a roll call vote, please.
Alderman Novit.
Aye.
Alderman Notes.
Aye.
Alderman Powers.
Aye.
Alderman Preschlack.
Aye.
Alderman Goshgarian.
Aye.
Alderman Weber.
Aye.
Alderman Walder.
Aye.
Seven yea, zero nay. Motion carries.
Excellent. Are there additional items that you would like to discuss? Alderman Notes.
Thank you, Mayor. On Saturday, I would like, the peanut gallery opened their doors to a heated competition between our illustrious fire department and police department staff. And first of all, I want to thank the peanut gallery for doing that, because it was really a wonderful afternoon. I went over with my family, and both departments represented theirs, themselves very well with some pretty tasty hamburgers. And I don't, I, I have my personal favorites, which I'll, I'll, I'll keep to myself. And I don't know if the results have been disclosed yet, but both well-deserving of victory. I look forward to a rematch. And please extend my gratitude to everyone on your teams who not only participated in coming up with those recipes, but who came out to support your departments at the restaurant that afternoon.
Okay. Other comments? Hearing none. May I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.